Recent award from the Athenian Fellowship at the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. It's a pretty big deal and we're very proud of her and her work and I know she's going to continue to be active in municipal clerk business. And also wanted to thank everybody involved with the Beethoven Festival and especially for bringing the Minnesota Orchestra again to our Levy Park for a very special concert.
Lake Park.
I said Levy, didn't I?
Here's your break.
I meant Lake Park.
It's alright.
We were just talking about Levy Park. And then I'd also, we have some very special visitors here tonight. I would like to invite our Polish visitors to come up to the podium and introduce themselves and say something nice about Winona hopefully.
No pressure.
No pressure.
So, I'm Karol. My name is Karol Tszebeowski. I'm from Beethoven. I'm eighteen years old. I attend to high school in Beethoven. This year will be my last before university. Last year, I hosted Julia Froel in my home. We had such great summer. This year, I stay also with her. I really enjoy to stay in Winona. It's a pretty city. Lovely landscapes and hills, lakes. I've enjoyed to hike, water ski on this river. So, I have such a great time here. I think the best summer in my life. So, I really, really appreciate to be here.
How long will you be here in Winona?
Two weeks left, yeah.
Thank you and welcome.
My name is Mihail Gospodarek. I'm nineteen years old. I'm the last year student. I live in Beethoven in Poland. First of all, I would like to thank you for this exchange program, which is very good for us and for girls as well, I think, because we can learn a lot. I have very good time here. I very like this place, especially beautiful landscapes, lakes. And so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm from Studienica. This is small village next to Beethoven. I am nineteen years old. I really like this city, Winona, and La Croix too. I really like Mississippi River. It's very beautiful and very big. I really like lakes and mountains next to city.
Thank you and again, welcome. Enjoy your time here in Winona. That's all I have. Any comments from the city manager?
Just want to thank staff for the work on the CIP. Lot of work to go and we're starting our budget process, so looking forward to working with the council with that next month.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Eden.
Borzjakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1, the Johnson and Schofield Inc. rezoning request to go from agriculture to R1.
Evening Mayor and Council. This is the second step in the land use change requests related to Zero Garvin Heights Road. The first was the comprehensive plan change request that was approved at last council meeting. This is the rezoning to again go from agricultural natural resources to R1 low-density residential. This will facilitate future subdivision of the property into a residential development, approximately seventy, seventy-five units. That would be similar to the adjacent developments in the Crestview subdivision as well as the Meadows subdivision. On May 29th, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this item with the findings that are in your council packets. Given that recommendation, consideration of this matter tonight, council may approve the request as submitted. Under that option, the motion would be to adopt the findings of the planning commission and introduce the ordinance attached to your packets for approval. You could also deny the request, modify the request, or table the request if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anybody here that wishes to speak. Anybody here wish to speak to this issue of the rezoning? One last chance. Anybody wish to speak to the issue? Hearing none. Declare the public hearing closed. Ask if there's a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the request as submitted and accepting the two attachments of the ordinance to rezon and the planning commission report.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion?
I have a question.
Paul?
Carlos. About how many residential units do we have up on Garvin Heights currently between East Garvin Heights and the Wing Crests?
That's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head.
The reason why I'm asking is I'm curious about the impact on Garvin Heights Road, which is a difficult road to maintain because it's in the shade all the time and what the additional traffic will, that impact will have on the road.
I did speak with the Winona County engineer about this proposed subdivision in the future and the amount of units, seventy to seventy-five new homes as part of this eventual subdivision. He did not see any traffic issues as arising from this future subdivision, not only on Garvin Heights Road, but also where it intersects with Lake Boulevard coming into town.
Maintenance concerns?
He didn't anticipate any substantial concerns, especially with the improvements that are being made to the intersection of Huff Street and 61.
Any other comments? George?
And then again, there's two entrances into that development. If you want to take the scenic route, you can take 43, or if you would work in Rochester living there, you would just cut right across the top and go. So, the Garvin Heights Hill would not be the only road leading to that development.
Any other comments or questions? Not? Go vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1, reappointments to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Kendall Larson and Dennis McIntafford. Move to approve those appointments.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.2, reappointment to the Recreational Waterways Commission of Dale Betcher.
No, to a girl.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.3 is a request to hold the Warrior Waddle on Saturday, October 6th as part of the Winona State Homecoming.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. George?
And just to add to that, this is a great event and it says that they prefer to have the course marked with chalk, so that we do that. So, that's a big one, so.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.4 is the East sidebar street closure request for Saturday, July 28th.
Move to approve that request.
Motion by George and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.5 is a request to close Hilbert Street for a neighborhood block party on Friday, July 20th. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.6 is the Wayne Street Black Party for Tuesday, August 7th.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.7 is the Sunset Drive Black Party request for Sunday, August 5th.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? George?
Al, will you be serving your chili at this?
No, that's reserved for the Civic Association, George.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's a wonderful event and these are all in cooperation with the National Night Out and all those neighborhood parties, block parties, and a good get-together program.
Seems to be more of them this year.
And that's a good thing.
That's great, yeah.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.8 is the Main Street Program request to close Third Street on Thursday, August 2nd. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. I see Main Street is here. Do you want to say anything? Emily?
Good evening Mayor and Council. I am thrilled to announce the first of what will be many, many projects on Third Street with a grant that we received from the Bush Foundation with support from the Minnesota Main Street Program and Springboard for the Arts. I think you received some communication with some additional events that we know certain dates on, but there are several more projects coming down the pipeline and I'm thrilled to be able to have those moving and have some dates on the calendar and to really see some momentum in that core business district downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Al?
Quick question. Would you be requesting the city provide barricades for that project?
We'll need barricades. The intersections will stay open, but we're asking for barricades on that Third Street during the event.
I just didn't see it in the article here.
Oh, yes. Yes. That's the only thing. Yes, they're very, they're meant to be very minimalistic. They're meant to be not spontaneous, but very low-budget, interactive programming.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Any other questions? I guess we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.9 is the Zombro Street Closure Request for the Winona Area Catholic Schools Event on Friday, August 31st.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George and seconded by Jerry. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.10 is a request for noise variance for an outdoor movie at the East Rec Center on Tuesday, August 7th. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion?
Al? Just a comment I noticed in the list for things that will go on for that event is that the city will provide first aid, bug spray, and flashlights. Good thing. Good thinking.
All good things. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.11 is the Stormwater and Report and the 2017 Partners in Energy Report.
John?
Good evening Mayor and Council. These items were just included for reference purposes. There's no action required on your part, but I didn't want to say that the Partners in Energy goals will be getting an updated report as Sadie mentioned pre-council. That will reflect some of the work that we've done the last three or four months. This is a reflection of the 2017 and early 2018 work. The Stormwater Report is a bit more extensive. That's a 2017 full-year required as part of our MS4 permit. And so, it's included just for your information purposes, but happy to answer any questions you might have about what you hear.
Okay. Al?
Not a question really, but just a comment. It's nice to see all of the paperwork that goes with some of these permits and thank you for including them for our education as well. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is a license agreement request from Zayo for co-location of small cell wireless on City Light Pole.
Is there somebody here from Zayo? You are.
Hi.
Good evening. Want to state your name?
My name is Shelley Tranpetti. I represent the Zayo Group.
Okay. We were given some additional information after last meeting. I just, I have a question. Actually, I had a constituent that wrote to me about this and I just want to ask his question, I guess. I can find it. Well, here it is. How do you decide where these towers go? I mean, you're proposing two of them. I mean, are you going to be coming back with proposing lots more of these? Or, I mean, I guess I'm just, how do you determine where these should go?
Sure. So, it's actually just an antenna and a radio installation on what is, you know, a city light standard. So, we won't be putting up a typical cell tower as a light thing. The installation is less than a hundred pounds. It's a small two-foot antenna, about that big around, that sits on top of my standard. The radios and the battery backup are attached to the light standard at the top, just under the light. So, the way they determine where they want the coverage is based on capacity. So, here in the downtown area, of course, and then on campus is where they're trying to offload. It's not that we, they don't have coverage here, as we do, just fine. It's just definitely just a capacity situation. So, maybe we have events down here or during the business, you know, work week, obviously on campus, you understand when that, you know, needs more capacity offload. So, that's what they determine, you know, where they're going to need the small cells. So, small cells, you know, probably see more of them come in to town. It's kind of, I guess, the wave of the future. But they really are being used to just offload capacity in very, you know, populated areas.
Okay. This constituent wrote, who was, he says, "In the valleys within the city limits, there are areas where cellphone access isn't available, especially the farther up the valley one lives," where he is. "He's wondering if an antenna placed at the base of the valley on a light pole where reception is strong would be one way of giving better reception further up the valley." And he says he knows this is a problem behind Sugarloaf and also the back half of Valley Oaks area. So, is that something you would be looking at? Or is it?
So, provide that kind of coverage. You need a macro site close by. When I say macro, that's necessarily the common installations with the large antennas, your towers where you see, you know, six to nine antennas, you put a micro antenna. That's what provides coverage, your main coverage. So, when you see a small cell, again, it's just a capacity offload. So, I think in the future that they'll start, you know, getting small cells in neighborhoods, possibly, but that's pretty far in the future. You know, right now, they're just focusing on, you know, heavily populated areas such as downtown areas and colleges. But eventually, yes, but you have to understand that the small cells aren't powerful antennas, right? They're just here to cover this general area right here and they're not going to reach a mile away. There's just too much interference, right? It's not like a big macro site that's going to cover, you know, the entire downtown across 61 and it covers everything, because they're very powerful antennas. These aren't. So, possibly might see them in neighborhoods in the future, but it's not going to be your one only cell site to cover a neighborhood. And valleys are always going to be a problem with any cell site of any type. So, again, small cells don't carry very far. So, in order to cover a valley situation or a development situation, you know, they may put, depending how big the development is and what the interference is between the antennas, you know, they may have, you know, one every four or five blocks. It just depends, because they're only about thirty feet tall, right? The poles we're looking at, we're not looking for eighty feet or a hundred feet. That's just not how small cells work. So, that answers your question as far as coverage.
Well, I think you have answered it.
Yeah.
Could these be mounted on buildings rather than light poles with that?
Indeed. You're going to see two types of small cells. So, you're going to see the round canisters, which are an omni antenna, and they just project out every direction, right? Because they're round. Then you'll see very small directional antennas, which are maybe about this big. And you'll see one, and you'll see it in a triangle shape, right, around the pole. And these are all very small poles, so you're never going to get, you know, large antennas on them. They're just not made to hold that kind of capacity of weight. So, so, no, you can't put on buildings because of the fact that it needs to be directional and then you have to mount it on a rooftop and they're getting too high, right? You're getting too high in the air and it would have to be at the edge and the directional won't work because it's, the one that's shooting in this direction may be shooting back towards the roof, which isn't helping you. So, that's why the omnis are effective, because it radiates in all directions. And so, you kind of have to have a hot pool to get your coverage that you're looking for.
Okay. Al?
Number of questions. First of all, thank you for being on our meeting tonight to answer these questions. I really appreciate that. Do you, as, you know, these small cells, do you require anything other than the pole itself? In other words, do you need additional pedestals? Obviously, you need a power supply, which probably comes off the pole. How about the access to a wireless or a wired kind of carrier? And what kind of carrier provides this kind of service?
Sure. So, yes, we do need power. It depends on, in the cities, it depends on engineering and it depends on the utility company, whether they will allow us to mount our meter correctly on the pole or if they need a small pedestal, you know, next to the pole.
Okay.
It's entirely up to the Public Works Engineering and Utility Company. That's how many meters put in and they need to work with the utility to bring the power to the pole or to our unit. Typically, these are light standards, so there's already power to the pole. So, we usually are be able to submeter off of that typically. It just depends on what's at the pole existing.
I know in the city, we have our own poles, which are subject to this particular item, but then we have also poles that are owned by Excel Energy, which is not. And the city, as I understand it, has a basically blanket agreement with Excel rather than specific meters at each pole. So, that was the purpose of my question. So, you know, whether or not you can go forward installing a meter just for your particular antenna versus the cost of the electricity to, you know, run the light standard itself. That was where I was at.
And that's another option too. The city would prefer that we don't put a meter and that we pay them for electricity. The Minnesota League of Cities, when they develop these small cell statute, has a calculation, you know, a suggestion for power usage. And so, in here, what they're doing is giving you a calculation based on the amount of watts being used per day across the year. And then, you know, we can agree with the city to pay a hundred dollars a year or whatever the calculation comes out to be. So, it's entirely up to the city if they want us to just reimburse them for power or if they want us to meter it separately. We're happy to do it either way. So, and they look at the Excel Energy poles. We are working with Excel on a pole down here and then we just work with them to, of course, bring their power to it and it's, you know, if it needs to be submetered.
So, is Zayo the wireless provider?
No, the wireless provider that Zayo was working for is Sprint.
Sprint. Okay. Are you aware of the federal legislation that's currently being discussed in Congress about a national plan for small cell wireless?
I am.
Okay. That's just been out, actually as of today, where it would preempt a lot of these state rules. So, you know, we're under a requirement by the state to agree to this, but there is federal legislation apparently that would exempt even the state rules. So, we may be having a conversation again in the future or maybe not, depending on how this federal legislation goes. But right now, the Minnesota Legislature has said to cities like ours, you know, "We must work with you to provide these kinds of services." I just wish to bring that up.
And to answer your second question as far as transporter backhaul or fiber, what do you call it, to get the signal? So, it depends on the carrier. Sprint has an installation that has something called a UE relay and it's a small device that's also mounted on the tower at the top where you put it. It's about this big, about that tall. The UE relay acts as sort of a microwave dish. So, they're getting their signal from a macro site that's close by. Now, other carriers, I've got all of the other ones, but I don't think anybody else has UE relay type of transport situation. They're going to bring fiber to that tower and that's a whole separate issue, a whole different carrier.
Oh, that's, yeah, it's public right-of-way access and
Right.
how that would be disturbed to provide the fiber, yeah.
But we don't need the fiber.
Okay. That's interesting. Didn't know that. Thank you.
Michelle?
Well, I would make a motion, and I'm just going to read off these four items that we did get included in the agenda items so that we're clear. I make a motion to approve the master co-location agreement between the city and Zayo Group and that we agree to have a small cell wireless antenna located at the northeast corner of Johnson Street and 4th Street and at the intersection of Huff and Mark Street. And then I authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. And thank you for all of the extra information here with the issues. That was great.
I'm not going to order.
It says direct.
I know.
So, this time I don't have to order you. I'll ask them to reword it for next time.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Further discussion? Paul?
So, your, thank you for staying and answering some of these questions. Your Zayo only works for Sprint.
That's correct.
And downtown, because you don't feel that you have the capacity to manage the load downtown, that's why?
Right. So, leave celebrations, any sort of conventions or anything like that. I don't know. It's going to offload capacity. So, when I say that, you guys maybe are having a meeting and it's also going to help give a little more signal to the buildings too, because it's, you know, that level of buildings. You're not going to have so much trouble, you know, one finding signal and number one keeping your phone call, because when you're dropping, it's just a capacity issue, you're getting kicked off in the network. So, they're finding that there's capacity, you know, when there's events or whatever, there's a capacity situation. So, we're providing that offload with the small cells.
Do you represent other carriers in other communities or just Sprint?
Right. So, I actually work for Fuel Consulting and they agreed to start with Fuel Consulting as their site acquisition firm. So, then we worked with the cities to find the locations of the small cells and then for security agreements and then Zayo just in construction. So, Fuel Consulting has worked with other carriers, yes, for small cell installations across the metro and across the state.
So, if another carrier came to the consulting company and said, "We would like to put some small cells in downtown Winona," you would be back representing another carrier?
It would depend on if I was still representing Zayo Group, if that project was done and we no longer had a contract with Zayo then, you know, perhaps it may put me on another project with another carrier. But I, you know, competitive interest, I can't represent two carriers at the same time, so.
So, we could, we might be seeing you or another representative from another company for some small carriers. Back to the valleys, that some of the valleys that we're talking about are barely a couple of blocks long, but they're narrow and sheltered and it's an opportunity. Because of how close in they are, it's an opportunity to accommodate some of those users who can't use their cells at home. So, just FYI.
And, you know, just to help with that, how Sprint determines also is you're going to have complaints, right? right, from customers. So that's what initiates pretty much everything in the wireless world is customer need. So at some point, a customer has said, "Hey, my Sprint coverage is at, you know, as reliable as I like it to be in downtown Winona or on campus." So then, you know, that initiates RF to, say, help we have coverage here and that starts the whole ruling. So my point is, if you're a Sprint customer and you call Sprint and say, "I don't have coverage in this valley that you're talking about," you know, that's how you, that's how you're going to start the law ruling. Sprint will look at that for an ATT or Verizon or whoever. And that's how they'll determine if they can afford to have coverage here.
Well, I never have a problem with Verizon, so. Can more than one carrier be on a pole?
Well, states actually limit the pole to 50 feet. And what that does is it sort of ties the hands of the carriers because most carriers want, have 30 feet. So it's not like, it's not like it's typical cell tower where I'm going to build a 150-foot cell tower. And the city council is saying, "Okay, you can do that, but you have to make sure that four other carriers can co-locate on that tower." Makes sense, understood. You can get that many carriers at that height. At 30 feet, you maybe can get another carrier, but there's no guarantee. It's not like a tower where if you build it, they're going to come because if I'm putting it there, there's a need for every other carrier. Small cell, not so much. So that would mean that the carrier would have to outlay the money originally for a 50-foot pole with no guarantee and no, probably not a chance that another carrier is going to come in and co-locate on that tower because we're going to stay at 30 feet and they'd have to go above us.
Okay. I have one further question, and this has to do with, within our downtown area, we have historic districts and one of our plans is to replace some of the light poles with decorative light poles. Do you ever mount them on, can they be mounted on decorative light poles?
They can. We just signed a couple in Dyna and they had lantern, dual lantern decorative light pole. And we replaced it with, this is the pole exactly the same lantern, it's at the same height, and then it just had an extension of the lanterns with the small cell over it. And honestly, you don't even notice it. I had missed it, just because I go by it. There was an existing one at Verizon and Dyna.
Okay.
So they're very, very unnoticed, but not like typical cell site.
Okay, that's good. Other questions? If not, I guess we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 4.2 is the ash tree injections for EAB. The best bid from Rainbow Tree Care was an anticipated total of $67,675.75.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Al? I see in it, I see the word anticipated. And that sort of concerns me. I guess I'd like a little explanation as to why it's anticipated, why can't it be exact? Does that have to do with the number of trees involved or, I mean, I think this is a reasonable agreement, you know, from Rainbow Tree Care, but, you know, I'm used to doing up to that amount and not to exceed it. I wish that Keith was here to kind of answer that question or if anybody on staff that is here could answer that question, I'd appreciate it.
I know that originally the program was to treat a third of the trees, a third of the trees, a third of the trees. And being that we're down to the 2,000 number through removals, got about a 90% effectiveness rate, which obviously that's knocked a few of the trees out. So that's, that 900 is about that third number. You know, it's just short of a third. That's why it's kind of bagged like that. I know with this company, they have 40-plus odd people that are certified to do this work. So I don't think it's an issue of them having availability to do it. I believe that's just what they think they can get done and they're a lot of time.
I just don't want to have something before us that says, "Well, we had, you know, approved $67,675 and then people come back and say, 'Well, I'm sorry, we need another $10,000.'"
That won't happen.
No, that's
But I think we, if you want to feel comfort, more comfortable about it, then the motion should be not to exceed that price.
Well, thank you. I would then make an amendment to the motion to say that instead of anticipated cost, it would be not to exceed $67,675.75. That would be my amendment. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Original motion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Carries.
Under new business, item 5.1 is a transit grant application for 2019.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.2 is a Prairie Island spillway parking and picnicking area lease from the federal government.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.3 is a temporary work area easement for the East End Boat Harbor for the Army Corps of Engineers.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? George?
Mayor, I just have one comment. This came to us at Deport Authority last week, Thursday as well, too. And just to mention that, to tag along on this, that the East End Boat Harbor, it's filling in, in there. So if there is a way that we could do it, the Corps could do it, whatever, to get the deposits down in that harbor. We've been talking about it now for, I think, the last probably three, four, five years on dredging of that harbor. So whatever can be done.
Which portion of the harbor, George?
Uh, the whole thing in there. The entrance coming in and then, you know, the center of it. So.
Can we, there's some that, show me?
Yeah, we can, we can, so, all right, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.4 is an application for redevelopment grant funding.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Lucy, did you want to say anything?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a redevelopment grant and they haven't been available for approximately two years. And the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development just came out with an announcement. Applications are due August 1st. And we felt as though the city could apply for the redevelopment project for the proposed new Bassinell Downtown Office Building because the grant can help with demolition, asbestos removal, et cetera. So this would be a good fit for that redevelopment project. We anticipate applying for $175,000. We estimate the project will be $350,000 in total. The balance would be provided by the developer, so.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.5 is the final plot for the replat of Lot 4, Block 1, J.T. Shane Industrial Park.
And make a motion to approve the attached resolution and introduce it for adoption and accept the resolution of Planning Commission's stat report.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion?
Is the developer here tonight? Just a couple of thoughts on this. I looked at that last, last night, very familiar where this is. I say there's one building already there. But when the time does come and something is going to be built there, whenever that time may come, that we take a very, very close look at the drainage of that property. Because every time a development goes into this area here or east of it, it creates a drainage problem, which we have one right now, which I'll just touch on under Council Concerns, but that it's very important that we don't be, that this is drained properly. So we, so we can kind of not come across all the problems we've had with the past couple developments, so.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item 5.6 is a letter of concern regarding the electric vehicle charging grant.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by George and seconded by Paul. Discussion?
We had proposed this, I think, at the last meeting. As you can see from the corridors that the states decided to fund, we're not part of the project. So we can't even apply for a grant funding. And John and others have done a lot of work to get the 61 corridor put together. And I think this letter will at least let them know that our displeasure and rattle the cage maybe a little bit.
All right, we'll see if it helps. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.7 is the Live at the Levy event on September 9th.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Well, since we already know George has one, we'll start with George.
Thank you. Yes, in regards to what we just talked about with, with the current development, as you first enter onto Lorre Drive, as we go about probably a quarter of the way in, there's a drainage problem on the left-hand side. I know Brian and I were out there looking at it and I know Steve, I think you're going to get you involved in the conversation, too, as to what we can do to rectify that, that problem. So appreciate the help of whatever we can do to come up with that. And it leaves standing water and things, and of course, there's a pond there, too. But just, you know, we can get something figured out and something taken care of for that neighborhood. So who's ever all involved in the agenda?
I'd have John involved, too.
Okay, John involved as well, too, so. And also, simply want to send out birthday greetings to a very young 90-year-old, Annette Vichoric. If that name sounds familiar, she worked for Winona County in the information systems a few years back and talked with her yesterday and let me tell you, she's going to go another 90. So happy birthday to Annette and many, many more. Thank you.
Are we going to sing, George, or you and I?
I would pay money. What can I donate to?
You don't have enough money to pay.
Oh.
It's not that it hasn't been done. Paul?
Just two things, if I can remember what they were. So I, along with everybody else, am pretty excited about all the development that we have going on. I just would like to, all of us to be putting our caps on, our transit caps on. How are we going to be moving all of these people around downtown? Where are we going to be putting their vehicles? And I think that's planning we need to kind of maybe even have ahead of time. Because I, I don't want to see us plopping really wonderful developments down and then thinking after the fact about how are we moving these people through the community? So just, that's one thing. And then Patrick, I'm glad you're still here. I'm seeing lots of people going up the trail at Sugarloaf. And it looks like we have a little bit of erosion up, up there along Lake Boulevard for parking. And are we going to be putting some asphalt in there or just some more? It's kind of a little bit of a drop where you park along the whole area. Are we going to be kind of leveling that out a little bit or what's the plan? Yeah, please.
Mayor and Council, there's some discussion about adding additional parking right at that location and we're talking with the property owner right now. So until that gets flushed out, we'll hold off on comment on that, but.
All right.
As far as the, the erosion that, are you, do you mean right by the stone steps in the back of the Dyna?
Uh, no, uh, right along Lake Boulevard there where the orange columns are out.
Okay, okay, we'll check into that.
Okay. Michelle? No concerns. Jerry?
I agree with Paul. Everybody's excited about all the upcoming construction and developments and it's, it's fantastic. I agree, we need to be thinking about how we're going to transport everybody and where they're going to park. But also, let's not forget about, as we're planning all this, how is it going to affect city's maintenance? One simple thing in mind, you know, downtown, there's always been that ongoing thing of who picks up the trash and cuts the grass on that little median. It's not a big deal, but it's always forgotten about until the business owners. And that takes city hours. So we're going to be adding more and more simple things, even if it's private development that still affects our maintenance. So as these new, soon to be successful and beautiful things are going on, where are they going to drive, where they're going to park and how are we going to maintain it? So as long as that's thought about ahead of time rather than trying to play catch-up afterwards.
You'll see the plan in our budget.
Excellent, thank you.
Al? Okay, thank you. Just a reminder, the municipal band continues their summer concert series this Wednesday. I think there's, they're halfway through their season and hopefully everybody can show up at 8 o'clock at the Lake Park Band Shell this Wednesday for another fabulous concert by the 103-year-old Winona Municipal Band. And then just a reminder that come August, and we're actually seeing it now, there's more construction activity. So please drive carefully in the Huff Street and Highway 61 interchange because that's going to be under construction and people need to have their, their thoughts on as far as traffic safety when they go through that intersection. That's all I'm here for.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, alibi run. I get a lot of talks.
Yeah, I do, I do.
With the, with what's going on with the municipal band and tomorrow evening, et cetera, no, Wednesday evening.
Yeah.
Just for all those tens of thousands of people that are going to be there like they always are, please bear in mind, the new flags will be put up very soon. If they're not up, they should, hopefully might even be up by then. There's been quite a few concerns. Al's been hearing some, I've been hearing some. You know, why the flags look and the deterioration that they are, it's because brand-new ones, new flag poles, new everything. We said it last week, but people are still going to be concerned and rightfully so until they replace. So at a large expense, all donated dollars, that will be done any day with new poles, new flags, et cetera, et cetera. It should be done very, very soon. So thank you for your patience.
Thanks for picking up on that.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items. Approval of the minutes from July 2nd, the final adoption of an ordinance to vacate a portion of a utility easement, and an ordinance to prohibit parking on portions of Mark Street.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn. Thank you, everybody.